But we're just surprised that everybody showed up on time here.
I thought I was late.
You know what taxis normally are, aren't you?
We turned our clocks over.
Yeah, it's that, yeah, it's that clock change affected us all. All right, we can start right now. Good morning, welcome to the March 7th Planning Commission. It's nine o'clock, so we're gonna have roll call.
Gong.
I hear.
Billy.
Here.
Elliot.
Here.
BS.
Here.
Willatch.
Here.
Philiano.
Here.
Aguilar.
Stanford pledge allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's move on to item two, public comment. At this time, members of the public may comment on any items not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for Planning Commission consideration. So that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak. Any person addressing the Planning Commission may be limited at the discretion of the chair. At this time, please use the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Do we see any, Hector, did you wanna make a note?
Yes, Hector Garra, Chief Environmental Planner, RMA Planning Branch. Chairman Gong, members of the Planning Commission, members of the public. I want to take this brief opportunity to introduce Jessica Willis. She is the new planner four to my division. I'd like Jessica to just make some few remarks, a little bit of her background and whatever she wants to talk about.
Good morning, Jessica.
Good morning. Again, my name is Jessica Willis. I am the new planner four with the Environmental Planners Department with RMA. I just wanted to give you a little bit of background on my experience. I am a lifelong Valley resident. I was born and raised in a small community in western Fresno County. I graduated with a degree in biology with a minor in chemistry from Fresno State in 1997. And from there, I had various experiences with employment from USDA, the Ag Research Service Water Management Lab, with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife at the Mendota Wildlife Reserve. And for the last 10 years, I've been a sequoia practitioner with the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District. I am bringing to RMA expertise in air quality. I work with the Urbemis models. For the past few years, I beta tested and if, I'm working with the California Emissions Estimator Model, which is the model that we currently gauge all air quality criteria pollutants with. I have experience with writing environmental documents such as mitigated NAGDEX, notices of determinations, whatnot, specifically with oil fields, wineries, and different flexographic printing processes. So I enjoy my, my career here. I am enjoying the possibility of expanding another 20-year career with the county, and I look forward to working with you all. Thank you.
You.
You're welcome.
Welcome.
Okay, let's move on to item three, approval of the minutes.
I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Gong.
Uh, yes.
Billy.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
BS.
Yes.
Willatch.
Yes.
Philiano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Okay, the minutes have been approved. We're gonna move on to item four, public hearing. The mining permit number PMR 14-002 and final environmental impact report for Deer Creek Rock Company. This is a surface mining permit and a reclamation plan. And we have Chuck, who's gonna give the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Chuck Przybalski, the Planning Division at Resource Management Agency. Today before you, I have a mining permit amendment, PMR 14-002. A brief overview of the particular project that we're gonna discuss today. It's owned by Jackson Enterprises, which is the applicant. It's located along Deer Creek and Deer Creek Road. The size of the parcel is about 120 acres. The general plan designation, it's within the Foothill Growth Management Plan and its Foothill Agriculture. The zoning designation is agriculture-exclusive, 10-acre and 40-acre minimum. Uh, this is the vicinity map. You can see the particular project site is southeast of Porterville, and this line right here is, is actually Deer Creek there. It's northeast of Terabilla. A nice aerial photo of the site. You can see the creek just north of the site. This is an existing mine that we're talking about here. The excavation area that they're planning to mine is to the east of the site and, and along this area right here. The amendment today is, uh, it's gonna amend, uh, several different, uh, use permits are already approved by the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors, 7770, uh, 01001, 09002, and, and, uh, 01055. Currently, the maximum annual instruct, uh, extraction of the site does not exceed 450,000 tons a year. It's actually 450. And this is why they're applying for the amendment today. The, the applicant is asking to increase the annual production by 450,000 tons to 950,000 tons annually. To do this, they also need to increase their truck hauling capacity by 176 round trips per day to a maximum of 376 trips per day. And furthermore, this amendment will allow consistency between all the existing permits. Since there's several approvals for this particular project, um, this provides consistency between all four or five of them, mainly the hours of operation from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday. That's from 6:00 p.m. Monday, or 6:00 a.m. Monday to 7:00 p.m. Saturday, 24 hours. What this project does not do, or change from the existing mine permits, it does not change the maximum depth of the mine. It does not change the existing footprint of where they're digging and extracting the rock. Uh, the total life of the mine for 50 years, or 40 million tons of rock material, and it does not change the approved reclamation plan for the mine. This is the site plan for the mine. Again, as you saw in the aerial photo, north is to the left of us, or to your left. You see the existing plants, and then the, the mine operation will continue on to the east and take out this hill right here. This is the reclamation. Uh, they're gonna to essentially slope the, the site. You have to turn this around because the other one, so north is actually to your right. Uh, but this is an approved reclamation plan for the site, which will be reclaimed to grazing land and slope benches. Okay, the existing permit conditions. Uh, there were some concerns about the, uh, the site with light, noise, dust, and traffic. It ended up not being this site, but another site. However, the county code enforcement division did go out there and five, and conduct five site visits, and three of them were unannounced site visits, uh, to make sure that the applicant was applying with the, uh, the conditions of approval. And, uh, code enforcement essentially said there were no violations of the permit conditions, uh, during these inspections. For general plan and zoning consistency, it's in the Foothill Growth Management Plan, which allows rock, sand, gravel excavation. And also, uh, the zoning allows for surface mining with the approval of a use permit or a mining permit. The environmental summary, uh, an EIR, or Environmental Impact Report, was prepared for this project. It was submitted for 45 days review, which ended in January 20th. Uh, it includes a mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program. And the EIR concluded that the project will not result in a significant impact. Comments were received from the Department of Office of Mine Reclamation, Caltrans, the Air Pollution Control District, and we received no comments from private citizens. Uh, the only, uh, comments that we needed to look at were the ones from the Air Pollution Control District, and there were some mitigation measures applied because of their comment letter. The other ones acknowledged we had a project.
Chuck, question, Chuck.
Sure.
Uh, you say there was no comments from the private citizens, didn't, but I read some here, didn't I?
Uh, that's correct. Uh, that ended up being for another site. Uh, we misconstrued, uh, where this was, and, and the, the person that complained actually complained about another site, not the Jackson one. So we went and inspected it as if it was this site, and it ended up not being this site at all.
Okay, all right. Chuck, I got a question too.
Sure.
On that, um, existing footprint, how much of that has been mined previously? And how much is new in terms of acreage they're going to be mining?
All, the whole footprint has already been approved back in 2012. Uh, so this particular project isn't expanding any of that. Uh, the original use permit was back in 1977.
But I mean, how much of it's actually been turned up, the ground, and, and actually mined, you know, and excavated?
Uh, I don't know the exact number of, of tons of material, but if we look back at this, uh, I'll just come back to the aerial photo. I can kinda give you a good idea of where they are, which is right. This is where the existing mine excavation is happening right now. The other, uh, areas over here are the stockpiles, the hot pet plant, and other mining, uh, materials.
Oh, the, the blue area you're talking about?
Right here. This is the hot plant, stockpiles, uh, and the washers and, and the machinery. So the actual mine that they're mining right now is right here. The existing approved mine essentially will take out this. So how, uh, Mr. Jack Baker is here, he can probably give you more of a total, and Mr. Mike Isar can give you a total production. But essentially, they get, they have all this area to mine off this hill. It's a big hill out there. And, uh, so they're, they got all this, essentially.
Chuck, I have one more question.
Sure.
Uh, in your report there, you said that you weren't gonna expand the footprint, and the life of the mine wasn't gonna change. However, you're gonna double the extraction rate.
Yes.
How's that figure? I'm a little bit confused on how that, how the numbers work there.
Essentially faster. They're, uh, they're, they're, right now, they are approved to extract this whole site. Uh, it's just, it's a matter of how fast they're pulling it out of the ground. So instead of, say, uh, this is a, uh, just a example, but instead of 100 tons a day, they're gonna pull 200 tons out of the ground. Whether the 40 million actually extends 50 years, we'll see how much rock is actually in the ground at that area.
So they may, so, so they may get to their end game before the, the life of the permit expires, is that what you're saying?
It's possible.
I see.
And, and just a little bit more clarification, Chuck. Uh, the dotted line is the approved footprint. That's what we're calling the footprint. So it isn't that going outside of that boundary. That was back in 77. So all they're going to do is continue excavation efforts and go to that dotted line and not go beyond it. So that's what we call the footprint.
Right.
Uh, even though it's a 50-year maximum, doesn't necessarily mean it may take 50 years to get there, but they're going to virtually double extraction activities.
Right. Okay, no, that explains it to me, I understand it now.
I have one question.
Sure.
And maybe this is not revel, relevant, but, um, the other site that you had the complaints on, and that it was the wrong site, a different site, was it also owned by Jackson?
Uh, no, it's not owned by Jackson Enterprises.
Thank you.
We've, on that one, we've, we've sent code enforcement out as well, and we're taking care of it. It's a totally different ownership, different thing together. I'd just like to make one comment again. This is just accelerating the, the excavation. It's indicative of the economy starting to pick up. We're seeing a lot more, uh, construction activity, therefore, there's needs for materials as well as the high-speed rail. A lot of people are gearing up for, for the construction of that. So this is just extracting on a faster basis what's already been permitted. It's not expanding it, it's not doing anything, it's just bringing it out of the ground faster, as opposed to having to go and look for a new mine to start up. This is just accelerating one that's already been permitted.
You, uh, continuing on, uh, there's some studies that were prepared for the environmental impact report. Uh, were the air quality study, a traffic and noise study, cultural resources assessment, and a biological evaluation. Uh, that all should be in the packet today. Regarding those particular studies that were prepared, we now have mitigation measures regarding aesthetics, air quality, cultural, hydrology, and noise. Now, that will be in the mitigation and monitoring reporting program in there. And to reiterate, that the implementation of this proposed project will result in a less than significant environmental impact report, and will not cause accumulative, uh, or economic, social, or growth inducing effects on the environment. This was notified to the public. Uh, it was notice of preparation in August last year. The 45-day review period ended in January 20th, 2015. A 10-day notice was sent to the Visalia Times Delta on February 26th, and a 10-day public hearing notice was sent to the surrounding property owners within 300 feet. Uh, that concludes my, oh, go ahead.
One question, Chuck.
Sure.
Didn't go over Caltrans' response. We've, we're doubling the truck traffic on this thing, and these are heavy trucks, and the roads aren't very good out there. And over the life of this thing, I could see those roads just being destroyed. How are they, how are you gonna mitigate that?
The, I'll have to refer back to Hector Garra, but Caltrans, I believe, had no comments on this particular project.
That's correct. They, they reviewed the project before we even initiated the project. The consultant sent Caltrans a design scope of work to indicate what facilities would be affected, what intersections. Caltrans said, yeah, that's the appropriate study area. When the results came back, uh, and, and we shared that with them, they were fine with the traffic study. And then when we, when we released the environmental impact report, they basically reviewed it and said, we have no comment. So they did have an opportunity to comment on it. They felt that, you know, within their preview, it was not going to have a significant impact. Yes, heavy trucks are, are, are different types of creatures, but in Caltrans' opinion, they were saying that it should not adversely affect their facilities at all.
Uh, to clarify it too, in your packet, attachment B is the Caltrans letter in response indicating that they have no comment.
They looked at it, so.
But they did look at it, yeah.
I didn't see anything on the, the route, the, uh, the route of travel for those trucks in and out to the main highway. Is, is it possible to see that, or, or?
Yes.
Understand where that goes?
And again, that route is not going to change. They're going to keep that the same way, and it's just the volume that's going to change.
Uh, this is, uh, it's probably a little hard to see on this particular map, but, uh, they come out Deer Creek Drive here. They make a left turn on, uh, road 268, 248, I believe. Uh, and essentially, this goes to, uh, a Plano Drive. From this, they come up to Teapot Dome, or head south on, on, uh, I'm sorry, they don't do that at all. They actually go head south to Avenue 95 in Terabilla, along, uh, Mountain Road 120, I believe, or Fountain Springs, uh, Drive right here. So they come out and down to Plano, uh, to Avenue 95 or 96 in Terabilla, and come out that way. And, uh, Mr. Baker can confirm that when, uh, he speaks before you.
And I have one other question.
Sure.
If you go back to the, um, overhead, just because of our history, what's been going on, are there any residences up there?
There is the one residence right here, uh, the Shannon's family, and I believe some of them are in the audits today. There are several residences to the east, uh, on this, this area over here, uh, also. They're about a quarter mile away.
Quarter mile, okay.
But on, on this hill itself, it would be the Shannon residence right here.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Um, and looking over the mitigation, you know, I like how it spelled out in the report. It says, uh, the ongoing monitoring during subsurface excavation. Who's actually doing that monitoring?
Monitoring of the excavation itself?
Yeah, when they break a new area.
For the, I'm, excuse me, hydrology, or?
Well, no, when they excavate a new area, it says, there's going to be ongoing monitoring during subsurface excavation. Who's doing the monitoring?
Uh, the county monitors. I go out there every year, uh, to inspect the site.
Well, every year, that's, they should be out there when they're breaking the ground and starting excavations of new areas. I mean, it has to be a qualified monitor for, if you're gonna put that under the cultural resources part, it has to be someone that can recognize cultural resources.
Oh, the culture, okay. For Garra, that would be the cultural.
I think the intent of that statement is, uh, obviously, we used, uh, Christina Roper, and she's obviously a qualified person, and, and in her professional opinion, she felt that, at least on the surface, there's no indicator that there would be any cultural resources. Yes, over time, as, as excavation occurs, it's gonna come upon the applicant and the operator to be cognizant of, of any potential discovery and to immediately cease. We do that all the time. We do that for every single project where, you know, subsurface activity occurs, and when they come across something, they feel it to be a resource, they immediately cease activities, and then, obviously, if it's, it's, uh, bones, uh, then they will call the coroner per, you know, the requirements of state law. But on a day-to-day basis, the county is not out there, it is a responsibility of the owner-applicant.
That, that, I mean, that's archaic. That's like from the 1970s. We're putting the onus on the operator to stop his own project.
And we don't disagree, but at the same time too, you know, based on what we understood from our, our cultural person, there's nothing to indicate that a, a, a surface-type history is there. So in their professional opinion, there's, you know, a remote possibility that it could happen anywhere. You know, we'll be the first to admit that, say, for our South County Detention Facility, it had absolutely no potential for, uh, surface resources, but paleontological, just based on the, the, I guess, the ancient bed stream that was out there. So we're, you know, we are not going to have a person out there on a day-to-day basis as they begin earth-moving operations out there. But if they stumble upon something, especially when you go six feet under, uh, the potential is there for that. So it, it, we don't want to be onerous, you know, we wanna, don't want to do anything that's going to, uh, I guess, slow down their ability to do what they need to do. Uh, so, but it is expensive and difficult to have a person out there on a regular, regular basis. We can't afford it the way Caltrans can. I know Caltrans is, especially where they end up going, uh, they do have a person out there on a day-to-day basis. They have limited resources.
Well, it's not. It, it isn't the county's responsibility to pay for that. It's the applicant.
But again, you know, until a discovery is made, we really, it's all speculative, it's a curse.
Well, the, the point is, is in that area, especially around Deer Creek and the northern part of this parcel, you know, there's, there's sensitivity there. Uh, if Christina Roper said there's no, there's no further mitigation needed, can you provide that to me so I can take a look at that?
And you just made a very good point there, Commissioner Elliot. You had indicated north, this is south of Deer Creek, you know, and, and you're right. You know, I'm not going to debate something with a qualified person like Christina Roper and yourself, but I'm just saying, but you're based on the expertise of our hired professional, or the applicant's hired professional, which we've used in several instances ourselves, or our projects.
Right.
We go with what the recommendation is, and, and hers is.
Well, could you provide that to me so I can take a look at that report?
The study, or?
Well, yeah, the study.
It should be a part of one of the dependencies of the EIR that, that should have been available to you when it was done. We may not have it in, in, well, I have it in my binder if you want to look at it.
Well, I'd like to see it. I mean, it's not in the packet, and I don't dispute the findings, I just want to see what.
Yeah, the packet is only gonna have the final EIR. You have received the higher EIR electronically.
Okay, well, if you could make that even electronically available to me, I'd like to take a look at it.
You want to look at it right now as this hearing is, is going on? I can give it to you if you'd like it.
Well, I mean, it, it, it doesn't seem like it's critical at this juncture, but I want to make sure this process, you know, we, we've got a new protocol now with cultural resources. So I'd like to see what Roper wrote in the report and when she did it.
Well, and just for clarification, on the actual mitigation measure, as Hector pointed out, it does say if applicable. And I think the if-applicable portion of that really speaks to what you two are talking about. And I think if the, uh, cultural resources expert did not say it's warranted at this time.
Yeah.
If-applicable language would apply. So that, I just want that stated in the record.
Okay.
Thank you. Excuse me. Any other questions? Uh, the recommendation today is, we have two motions for the Planning Commission. One is to certify and adopt the final environmental impact report as adequate and in compliance with the Environmental Quality Act, mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program. And then the second motion would be to conditionally approve mining permit number PMR 14-002. I know there's members of the public that wish to speak today, and, uh, after that, I will come up and reread the motions for the Planning Commission, uh, upon their motion. That, that concludes staff presentation. Thanks.
Thanks, Jacne. At this time, we'll open the, uh, public hearing. Uh, if anybody wishes to speak on behalf of this project, uh, please come up. You state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jack Baker, and I live in Redding, California. I am, uh, the, the applicant in, in this matter. I'm here, I'd like to offer to answer any questions you might have, and provide any clarification that I might be able to provide. In the meantime, um, I'd like to thank you for being here today. I noticed that we are the only item on the agenda. It isn't like that you're coming down here to deal with a lot of people, so you came out here just for one, one item. I appreciate it. I would, do want to say that, that our firm, we, we work in several different counties. We particularly enjoy working in Tulare County. Uh, we've got real good people out there on the project site. We've enjoyed working with, uh, with the county staff too. And I, it might make a, a kind of interesting point, at least to me, as applicant in several of these things in various counties, is that this is the only county that we've dealt with where the county actually goes through and does a lot of the preparation of the environmental impact report itself. And I've got to say, from the applicant's point of view, it has gone much smoother than the process that you go through in most counties. It's, it's, they get to the essence of the question, and, uh, where you hire an outside, uh, party to assemble the EIR, we, we waste a lot of time as the applicant, and a lot of money too. So I do, I compliment staff, I appreciate that. Now, if there's any question that you have that I might be able to address, I'll try.
Do you have any questions?
Well, I, the question I had was, was your company responsible to hire Christina Roper to do the actual archaeological survey work on this?
Yes.
Okay.
We, we, uh, the way that that works, if I recall, is that the county has a list of approved, uh, parties that can do that work, and, uh, we selected from that group, requested for, or proposals, and then we selected one based on, not just us, but making sure that the county was, was satisfied with who was going to do the study.
Well, I'm, I'm familiar with her work. I just want to take a look at it because I haven't seen the report, so.
I, I might make a comment on, uh, item you touched on, and that is the cultural resources and so forth. Our project sets above the road, higher up on the hill a little bit. And, uh, in the past, where we've mined long sands and gravels around creeks, streams, you do find a lot of artifacts, things like that, from the past. In this particular area, the, the hillside has been, uh, used as cattle grazing for a long time. And we're fortunate, we like it, there's not much soil there. You, you go through a very limited amount of soil, and you're immediately in very hard rock. And we have to drill and shoot the, the site. So part of our operation is that the driller goes out and lays out the areas where we're going to drill a hole. Let's say, for example, in an eight-by-eight pattern. So he covers that ground very thoroughly. It, it's possible that he could overlook something, of course, but, uh, it's, it's. It's, it's possible that he could overlook something, of course, but, uh, it's, it's unlikely, so I, I...
So you're actually crushing the material as opposed to scooping it out of the...
Yeah, you know, uh, when you're, when you're along a stream or a riverbed, it's, uh, the nature has done a lot of your work for you.
Right.
Because what you're doing there basically is just separating the sizes, and then if there's something larger, you cross the oversize. In this case, um, I wish I'd have brought a picture of the, the quarry itself. It is very high-quality, solid rock. And we're seeing the market expand a little bit, like, like Chuck addressed, we're seeing the market expand a little bit. The rock is of very good quality there and we sell some of it as far down in, into Kern County's Bakersfield. A competitor, a competitor of ours, Granite Construction Company, actually buys rock from us, hauls it clear to Arvin, and blends it with materials that they have because their material is too soft. Caltrans does not approve it. We've sold railroad ballots, concrete aggregates, it's a high-quality resource. And, you know, uh, the rock is where you find it. You don't, uh, we don't move that around, it's where it is. It's, really, it's a county's resource and that county has a valuable resource there. It's very good rock, high-quality rock. Unlike, I want to make one last point, unlike mining along a stream or a river where you'll find the rock is only twenty feet deep or thirty feet deep, just a lens of gravel, this is hundreds of feet deep. So when you think about that, you think about the surface area that you are disturbing. For one acre of surface area that we disturb, we can go down a couple of hundred feet, maybe more than that in some places. Where, as you disturb a one acre of riparian habitat along a stream or a river, you're only getting twenty feet of gravel out of it. So the impact on the surface of a, of a gravel mine is much, much greater than on a hard rock mine where you've got a deeper deposit. Anyway, I, I could talk about that stuff forever, so I better be quiet. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other testimony for or against this project, uh, please come up? Anybody? Seeing none, I'm gonna bring it back to the commissioners and close the public testimony.
I'm ready to make the motion if there's no other comments by my fellow commissioners.
I just wanted to say one more thing, though, if I could. One of the areas we have been lax in is paleontology. And this is, you know, the likelihood of finding stuff in terms of cultural is low and that's pretty apparent when you're in the hard rock. The rock material is something different and there could potentially be finds in that material and we need to address this, especially for future projects. We have an incredible resource here, this rock, and if there is something in there, you know, there could be something. I, I know when we did a landfill project in the county back in the early nineties, they required a little of that work and lo and behold, we found a, um, you know, a pretty much intact mammoth, which is now in, uh, Mooney's Grove Museum. And I was involved in that project because I knew a paleontologist that was working there. And this is the kind of thing that I, we need to predict the, um, when we're in this hard rock situation, we need to predict the probability of encountering fossils too. So it's something for you all to be aware of and hopefully, I mean, if there's a change in that rock, their geologists will know and they'll definitely call us and let us know. But that's, it's certainly not unheard of and a lot of those areas have never been touched and it's definitely worth surveying and taking a look. So that's all I have to say about it. I think that this is something we're coming along with the guidelines and cultural resources and we need to keep going in that direction.
Okay, I'll make that motion if there's no other comments. Certify it, certify and adopt the final EIR as being adequate and in compliance and adopt the CEPA findings and adopt the mitigated monitoring and reporting program for mining permit PMR fourteen-dive-zero-zero-two.
I'll second that motion.
Roque, please.
Dong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
CS.
Yes.
Willatch.
Yes.
Philiano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Motion has been, has passed.
I'll also make a new motion that we approve mining permit number PMR fourteen-dive-zero-zero-two.
Second's up.
Roque, please.
Dong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
CS.
Yes.
Willatch.
Yes.
Philiano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Both motions have been passed. Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration and we'll get the report to you, Mr. Elliott.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the next item. You're welcome.
Good luck.
Okay, let's go on to item five, uh, A, the planning director updates.
I'll just, uh, make one comment regarding, uh, there's an uptick in, uh, inquiries regarding solar facilities, larger-scale solar facilities, again. There, there's a new mandate of, I, I can't remember what percentage, they uptick quite a bit, uh, fifty percent by fif- by two thousand and fifty, I believe, uh, of renewables for the public utilities. So I'm seeing a new, new inquiries. We had that lull there, the window seemed to close, but now there's more activity as far as inquiring about potential sites. In addition, there's a number of different, um, programs at the state level that are, that are requiring the utilities to buy into, there's, there's some, uh, there's, there's different programs. So there's some unique, uh, projects that are looking here as well for some very fairly small-scale, uh, projects that actually allow disadvantaged communities and, and apartments and things like that to be able to buy into, uh, solar where they couldn't necessarily print it on their own project, but it's an off-site, but they're able to take advantage of it. So those are things that we might be looking at in the near future. Nothing's come forward yet, but those are the types of inquiries that I've been receiving and, and it certainly has picked up the last couple of months.
Aaron Bach, chief planner, Tulare County Commission. Uh, what we've been doing lately, as I've discussed last time, was really going out to the communities and continuing our community plan updates. Uh, one thing that, uh, Mr. Washington brought to the board yesterday was the GPI for the housing element. So within these updates, we're doing complete streets and also updating the housing elements. We're passing out surveys quite a bit lately. Uh, we're hoping to bring that all to a head here, um, at the beginning of the summer. So we'll have quite a few items for you at that time. And then during the summer, we'll also proceed with the housing element. So, uh, like I, I said, we'll give you a heads up, uh, when, when they are coming to you, but there'll be, there might be as many as five, uh, uh, four community plans and a, uh, a project that will actually come for a GPA and a recommendation for you, all of which have EIRs. So it'll be quite a bit of work and we'll try to get that to you as early as possible. But tentatively, you know, we're looking around the June timeframe for those housing element will move through in the July, September timeframe. So we'll have another, uh, uh, long hearing sometime in September with at least three, three GPA items. So it'll be quite a bit, we're, we're doing quite a bit of work, um, and, uh, hopefully it'll slow down in the years to come, but, uh, we're really trying to push this, uh, general plan implementation out and, and make sure it's happening. And one of the ways to do that is to update these, uh, community plans. That's all I have.
Pretty much said what I was going to mention regarding the, the EIRs that are forthcoming with, with the projects for the community plans.
I'm actually going to jump in here at the end of their report. Um, Julia Roberts, our boss at Resources, retiring after thirty-plus years with the county. It won't change your service any, but I thought you would like to know she's being honored at the board next Tuesday.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, yeah, but just, just interesting about solar power and how well it works. Uh, our museum, we're probably ninety percent powered by solar, but, uh, I have the opportunity to spend some time with the Cold Storage folks in Tulare. You know, they have, uh, well in excess of two hundred thousand square feet and each building runs about ninety thousand dollars a month with, uh, electric bill. How'd you like to have a ninety thousand? I think I could retire on that. But anyway, they're taking all the solar off of their buildings because they cannot keep up with the pigeons. And so in our museum, I brought that up, we're, we're, we're kind of befuddled what to do, but, you know, um, on buildings, it's a huge problem, pigeons. So, not that it has much to do with what we do, but it, you know, it can change the whole... You guys got any idea how, how to remove pigeons without killing them? Let me know.
Why don't they put them on the ground?
Well, I mean, the Cold Storage facility, there's not that much space on the ground. You got a hundred thousand square feet of roof and...
And they have all this roof space being unused.
Yeah, but it's not...
Working.
It's not working.
Right.
Very hard to keep them clean up on them.
Twelve-gauge shotgun worked pretty well.
Wait a minute, I didn't say that.
Depending on where you're shooting, I'll volunteer. It's a donation permit or something, right?
In the city, you cannot get a permit to do that and, uh, but it's a, it's a huge problem, so. If you didn't even have any planning on county buildings, it's something you need to take into consideration because it is a problem.
Okay, moving right along, uh, no further updates. Uh, so we'll go to item seven. Oh, I'm sorry, item six, future, uh, agenda item. Maybe Bill had brought that one up for you guys. Pigeons on the solar panels. Any other, uh, potential future agenda items? Seeing none, well, let's go on to item seven. Let's adjourn the meeting, we'll meet, uh, March twenty-fifth.
Can I just remind the commissioners to turn in your Form 700s before, uh, March twenty-seventh to Kerry?
I can, I'll send them an email, is that okay?
Can we, we need the originals.
What day did you want it, the twenty-seventh?
Almost send the sheriff out to collect if you don't.
Save, save gas.
Why do you have to send it to Kerry to get rid of all those crows?
I know the cities are very quiet about their birth control problems. One of those pigeons that worked at birth control.